Good afternoon and welcome once again to the Athens Planning Commission meeting. It is Thursday, March 18th. Had to think for a minute what month we're in. March 18th, it's a little after 12:00. It's about 12:04 PM. On our agenda today, we're going to jump into something that we do now every two years. So it's a little bit different from our typical planning commission meetings. And that is that we're going to be going through the Community Development Implementation Strategy, or CDIS, public meeting. And our agenda for that is the introductions will go through the slide presentation that Patty Whitmer has put together for us. So let's go ahead and roll right into, well, yeah, we'll roll right into that. And then we'll get into our regular planning session meeting.
Can you see the screen?
I can't. We'll just go full screen with it. It just jumped off.
Is that good?
That's good. You just want to click on the little projection screen.
Or F5.
I'm sorry.
If you click F5 on your keyboard, it'll go full screen. There you go.
Okay.
Great. Oh, there's a fair amount of detail in these slides. I will paraphrase off of them rather than to read them for you. But please make sure you are becoming acquainted as we go through this slide deck for the Athens Community Development Implementation Strategy meeting for our community development block grant allocations. Next slide, please. So this is kind of run of show for what we'll be going through, talking about funded projects in the past. I'm going to describe the three main programs, give you some data showing you where that we do have eligible blocks within our census tracts and some of the suggestions. But this is where we really want community input as well to identify, are there potential projects or areas in the city that fit within the LMI requirements that we may not be thinking about? And then we will have an opportunity for question and answers from the commission or from anyone who is in attendance today at today's planning commission. Next slide. This is just to give you a kind of a overview as to how this all works under DSA, the Development Services Agency, when it comes to community development, funding from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. And the program that we're going to be dealing with, as I mentioned, is the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG. You'll hear that a lot. You've heard about it, I'm sure, from City Council. But this is, it's a biennial requirement that we have this meeting. Next slide. These are some of the projects that have been completed or are in progress right now. And it's pretty substantial. One thing I want to make note of is if you look at these, it goes sequentially, 2011 up to 2016, then it jumps. It was in 2016 to where it went from a program that was implemented every year to now it's every other year. That's why you're seeing 2018, 2020, and then the two projects that are in progress with 2020, that allocation period. So quite a bit. Richland Avenue Housing Rehab, Franklin Avenue Improvements, current projects, Chime Reservoir, Washington Street Safety Improvements, and the wastewater treatment plant, de-watering equipment. So we feel we've been putting the CDBG money to, not only good, but very effective use here in the city of Athens. Next slide. So there's three main buckets or programs. The Community Development, Economic Development, and Public Infrastructure, and Target of Opportunity. And each one of these, it's different in which, the ways in which we can use that money. And there's not a lot of overlap with these, although there is some, sometimes when you're looking at these, you may think, well, some of these things should overlap. But these are very distinct programs. Patty, if you want to jump to the next slide, please. So the allocation grants, these are projects that include public facilities, housing, economic development, fair housing activities. We can apply for these biannually. Funds that are available are up to $150,000. The Neighborhood Revitalization Grants, these are, again, public facility improvements, constructing, reconstructing, renovations, rehabbing in targeted areas of distress. Again, this is for funding up to $750,000. And then there's the Critical Infrastructure Grant Mechanism, which we have used a lot, as well as the allocation grants, critical infrastructure, high priority, single purpose infrastructure improvements. Again, as I mentioned the last, a couple of slides ago, the de-watering down at the wastewater treatment plant, which allows us to extrude a lot more moisture, water out of our, out of what is produced at the wastewater treatment plant so that we can, you know, it's more affordable to transport and more easily land-applied, which is what we typically do with our sludge. And that's $500,000 under that mechanism. Next slide. Then we have the Economic Development and Public Infrastructure. Here we have the Economic Development Loans. These are loans, low interest loans, up to $500,000 for job creation retention. Economic Development Working Capital Loan, this is new, providing working capital. But they have to demonstrate COVID-19 impacts on the business. And this is up to $150,000. Economic Development Public Infrastructure Grant, these, again, are for permanent private sector jobs principally in low to moderate income, for low to moderate income persons, $500,000. And then the Residential Public Infrastructure Grant, up to $750,000 to improve water delivery systems, sewer systems, unique projects that need to have demonstrated needs in these areas. Next slide, please. And this is the Target of Opportunity. Again, this also has a new program. But starting at the top, the Economic and Community Development Grant for development of new projects that create or retain jobs. The funding is available based upon availability and need. Downtown Revitalization Grants, up to $250,000. This is interesting because it can be used for exterior or interior corrections for code violations, exterior modifications or improvements, really, structural rehab. And finally, again, this is a new one, the New Horizons Fair Housing Assistance. This is to implement strategies for fair housing choice activities that further fair housing in communities, something that I'm sure that City Planner and the Affordable Housing Commission will dig a little deeper into because it is new. And that is eligibility or funding available for up to $15,000 in one jurisdiction. So more to come on this since it is new and we're still trying to learn and understand that particular mechanism. Next slide, Patty. LMI Data and Eligibility, because that is what CDBG is all about, is making sure that within our census tracts and equally important blocks within those census tracts, we have to watch very carefully as to what areas of the city are eligible, what areas of the city are not eligible. The block groups of LMI need to be 51% or greater, the census tracts. We have eight of them in the city, they too. We do have census tracts that are eligible for the entire track within the city of Athens because they meet or exceed that 51% eligibility under the CDBG granting allocation formula. The, I think the last sentence is most important on this slide anyway, and that is the city of Athens has 13 block groups within our eight census tracts that qualify. Next slide. So here's the census tracts here in the city of Athens. And as you can see, certainly 9729, 9734, 9733, 9732, far exceed the corporate limit of the city of Athens. But they are, the corp limit within that census tract is counted in that overall census tract when it comes to eligibility. And then if you look at it, the 9739.02, 9739.01, I know the city planner is well aware of this, as am I, that under the 2020 census, those were our most difficult census tracts when it came to getting people to make sure they did their self-reporting, either online, mail-in, or door-to-door enumeration. And I do anticipate that when the final numbers come out for the 2020 census, which should be sometime soon, don't know exactly when, but when they do come out, that will certainly, or could certainly influence our CDBG allocations within our census tracts. Just not to go sideways too far on this, just to give you an example as to the undercounts that we did experience with self-enumeration, 9739.01 in 2010 had a self-enumeration percentage of those who self-reported, it was 47.6% in 2020. And Paul, if you want to chime in on this, I believe it was somewhere around 10 to maybe 11 percentage points lower than that. It was in the 36 to 37, maybe, maybe 38% range total within that census tract. So just to, just to make sure people were well aware, we were challenged under COVID-19 with our Athens census tract counting. Some census tracts far exceeded, oh, I shouldn't say far, they exceeded the 2010 enumeration, self-response rates. But I believe six out of the eight did not. Thank you, Patty. Next slide, please. Little bit more detail. This gives you the percentage breakout, percentage, LMI percentages, to kind of highlight a couple of them. If you look in your lower left-hand corner at 9731.01, the LMI percent is about 93.67%. And that's adjusted year to year, but initially it's based upon the censuses. So it's still based on the 2010 census, but it's adjusted, every year they make adjustments to low to moderate income within those particular areas. Next slide, please. Again, a little bit further, this is taking us down to the block group levels. And just to provide to each of you the number of block groups within the eight census tracts and what we're looking at with 50%, 51% or greater LMI within each of the block groups. Thank you, Patty. Next slide. All right. So these are, and know that these are just critical infrastructure or allocation projects that we have currently identified. And this is where this meeting is really important, is to make sure that we get public input for other potential block group or census tract areas that we may not have identified for possible project suggestions. A valve installation at the Highland Reservoir, and that falls under, obviously, is on the slide, critical infrastructure. The West Side Sidewalk Improvements, this would be removing the stairs on Second Avenue. One side of the steps, if I, I believe there are sets of steps on both sides of Second Avenue, as well as work on First Street, Second Street, I'm sorry, and First Street. Curb ramp updates in the Uptown area and qualifying neighborhoods. Improvement sidewalks on the West Side, or West State Street Park. And one of the things that we recognize is that with our storm system in the Uptown area, it is, in some cases, as old as a lot of the structures in the Uptown area and the brick streets upon, under which they lie, is improving the storm lines as well as brick street leveling. We have started doing some of that this, this year already. But we recognize that there's a lot of areas because of utilities underground failing and having to go in, remove the bricks, make the fix, and reinstall the bricks, that sometimes that becomes challenging when we're looking at trying to create more level brick streets. And mind you, it's probably worth reminding everybody, because I've heard this often, just remove the bricks. We have an ordinance, a longstanding ordinance in the Uptown area, Court Street, Washington, State Street, and other streets, President Street, to where, under a longstanding ordinance, those streets cannot be anything but brick streets. So there's a lot of maintenance with those. Now I'm going to stop there. And Patty, you can probably drop off share screen and I'll just remember to come back to Q and A. And just kind of open this up for other possible projects that anybody who's joining us today or anybody on the planning commission may be thinking of something. And then I will certainly open it up to Q and A. But I can also answer questions right now, or attempt to, or City Planner Paul Loke.
So in terms of a project, what's the status? You know, you have a water line problem going up to University Estates. Is that funded already, or is that a possible project that needs to be considered with all that, the slippage and whatnot that's happening in that particular area?
It cannot. I, and again, we have to keep in mind what is an LMI qualifying block group or census tract. And as I recall, that that is not a neighborhood that qualifies for CDBG. And it's a great question, John. And so, thinking this through, too, along that same line, the water, your water bill, the money that goes in is proprietary, and that goes to making improvements with water delivery systems, if, you know, along with a LMI block group census tract or not. That's, that's what we use to make those types of repairs or improvements, is just using the budget that already exists within the water, the water budget line. Any other questions from anyone? Or any, let me look in the chat real quick to see, we have a raised hand. And let me, before I get to that one raised hand, there was something, a comment just before that from the President of Council, Chris Nisley. And it's basically, will only one of the projects be approved in this allocation grant? I think that is typical, that we'll have one allocation project and one critical infrastructure. But I am not 100% sure on that, President Nisley. I will get an answer for that, as to whether you can have more than one allocation project.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, only one per biannally. So we are allowed one project. We can have several ongoing, but there is a limit to the number of open projects we can have. So we have to keep that in mind. And it varies for, for each project category.
Thank you, Patty. And we have a raised hand.
Yeah, I think that's me. It's Molly Fitzgerald with Economic Development. Mayor, I'm just curious, I'd have to go back into your PowerPoint and look up the name of it, but the CDBG funds that could be allotted for structural rehabilitation of buildings, is that something you guys would consider for the former A news building uptown? Where I know we're experiencing some issues there.
I think that for that, that one category, the Economic Development and Public Infrastructure, that we probably could look at that, Molly. That is one of the mechanisms that we haven't used a lot. As a matter of fact, I don't know that we've used it at all, but we're typically using the community development and Target of Opportunity, Critical Infrastructure. But we will, we can certainly look into that and it could be something that we apply for. We have to look at more detail with that, though, Molly. Good question.
Mayor, I have Richard Lynn Scott Hall in next for a question.
Great. Welcome, Richard.
Hey, can you hear me? We good? Great. First of all, I like the West Side improvements stuff that I saw there. I think that when it's talking about the connection to the West State Street Fields, that's super great. There's like that last little bit there that could really use connection. I guess the, the thing that I feel like I have to voice here that I've had several people ask me about recently, as things are kind of returning back to normal and people's interests to return, is there has been renewed interest in trying to find some use besides demolition and abatement to Great Greenfield for the West, East-West Elementary. And so I feel like I should ask here if any of these funds could possibly be used to that end. I know that that is an entire debacle in terms of, you know, it's, it's owned by the school board, there are time constraints and all of those sorts of things. But I do want to ask if theoretically any of these funds could be used for that? And if yes, how we could help facilitate that? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Richard Linska. The West Elementary, and I'm going to call it what I know it as, is West Elementary. You know, when the Athens City School District is done using it as a swing space, as they're, they are building two new schools, renovating the Plains Elementary and the middle school and the high school. It, it's certainly worth exploring. I think we have time. I don't think it'll fit within this allocation because we are looking at, this would be a 2022 project, but it's worth exploring. I think there's a number of other mechanisms that are also worth exploring. As I understand it, there's kind of a pecking order as to when, if and when a school district were to, to vacate and dispose of property, that there's kind of a triage as to who is offered, who's eligible first, who's eligible second and third. I will try to get more detail on that from Dr. Tom Gibbs. And, but I know that I'm really listening to your comment and think that there could potentially be some opportunity there in the future. And that's coming at us faster than we think. So I really appreciate the comment and we'll take that to heart.
I'll go ahead and let the next person in line here.
And is that me, Scott?
That is you, President Nisley.
Thank you. Two comments. I would echo Richard's saying about the West State Street improvements for the park over there, that that would be great because that goes in along with our Complete Streets kind of program concept, and especially might be able to link well with the Herald Avenue as we look to that, you know, coordinating projects. I'd also echo that interest if there's a way to look at the West Element, what we know as the West Elementary School for the future. And the, and the third comment is just a question, and David Riggs probably knows the status of this the best, but this is regarding some, what I think is in the low to moderate income, and it's Atlantic Street that is behind Richland Avenue, it kind of parallels it. And there have been a number of homes that I think some of maybe, and one was condemned, one's being fixed. So I wonder if that area might be a possibility, just for, as we look at low, low income, you know, a range of housing in our community.
David Riggs, do you have any comment to that? I know that you're well aware of Atlantic.
Yeah, we are. And we do have some blight in that, in that area. I don't know what we could do with, with the community funds to be able to improve that, because these are typically private homes that are blighted.
Okay.
And to, to, for anyone who's watching today or listening in, to kind of orient you to Atlantic, for those of you who don't know, Atlantic is off of Richland Avenue South in the neighborhood of the Speedway gas station down there. It is part of what used to be Mechanicsburg. But it is a very short street that has maybe all of five or six dwellings on it. But we can certainly look into that as well.
I would add that we, a couple of years ago, we did look into using the community block grant funds to, with some of our blight. And it turns out that the city would have to replace in kind. So if you removed a rental unit, for instance, in an area, the city would be responsible to replace an equivalent rental unit back in, in that area after removing it. So it's a, it's a little bit cumbersome to do, but it's, it's something we could certainly look into.
There's a question in the chat from City Council member Sarah Grace. Is improving lighting on West Washington included in the sidewalk improvement plan? I'm going to kind of defer to, to the Acting Service Safety Director, Chief Tom Pyle. I know that, that there was some lighting improvement down in that area. We had been working with AEP to put LED lighting down there as opposed to the old sodium vapor that are costly in terms of energy consumption. And quite honestly, not some of the brightest lighting. But Tom, if you want to give an update on West Washington?
We're currently in pilot phase for pilot project with AEP. And they are actively seeking approval through PUCO of their tariff that would help fund LED replacements throughout the state of Ohio. And so I'd have to get back on the contract and that we, or the MOU that we put in place with AEP to, but I recall at the end of the pilot, we can have them remove those and replace the structures, or we can leave them in and there's a slight fee for them. But I believe West Washington lighting is, will be taken care of through that MOU or through that pilot project. So I don't think it's necessary that we have to, to come up with something in the future for it. And as far as I can tell, they're working great. And we great. And we, we dial those, the wattages down on those, and the power consumption down on those at certain hours of low use through the quarter.
But we will certainly look at other lighting enhancements in that, that area. It's something that's certainly needed. And so we'll look at First Street. I know that that was not part of the West, West State Street, West Washington Street Plan. And we can look at it on Second Avenue as well. So we can look, certainly look at lighting on the, in the West Side neighborhood. I don't see any other questions, Scott. Any hands that I'm not seeing that are raised?
No, I don't see anybody at the moment.
Okay. If anybody has any ideas or suggestions, comments, questions, please reach out to my office, either via email or calling 592-3338. And, you know, if you've got other ideas, other thoughts on projects using CDBG, please, please let me know. Or anyone on the Planning Commission. Okay. That closes out our public meeting for the Community Development Implementation Strategy. And we are going to roll right into our Planning Commission regular meeting, establishing a quorum, noted that we have all, yes, all Public Planning Commission commissioners are present. I don't know, again, I'm going to lean on Scott. Scott, do we have anybody here? Well, we don't have any cases or communications, so we're not going to have anybody speaking on those. So I can, there is no administering of the oath. Disposition of the March 4th, 2021 Meeting Minutes. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to review those.
Make a motion to accept.
Have a motion, Tom Pyle, and a second from John Katschowski. Any comments? Okay, all in favor of adopting or accepting the March 14th minutes, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, the minutes have been adopted. Cases, we have no cases today. We have no communications today. So I am going to defer straight to reports from the City Planner and from the Director of Development and Code Enforcement.
Good afternoon, everyone. Just a few items this morning, or this afternoon. The first of note to the Preservation, excuse me, to the Planning Commission. As many of you are probably aware, but last, late last year, City Council authorized the Historic Preservation Commission to have design review authority over facade improvements and additions and new construction in the Uptown District. They reviewed their first case last week. That was the expansion of Bagel Street Deli into what used to be the Mountain Laurel Business Storefront. Went really well. They had just, they were really accommodating to make sure that they were helping out the business owner and the contractor to make sure that they, we weren't slowing down the process. They had their first meeting with a review on last Monday. And then they had a special session on Wednesday of last week with, to make sure that they kept everything going. That project was approved from, from the site plan preservation perspective. So I thought that went really well. I also want to thank David Riggs and his staff for helping out a lot, making sure that we had applications and all that information all set up, too. So they are ready to go for, for that to move into the future. So I'm really pleased with how that played out. Just two other items to know. We've been talking for the last year about the age-friendly Athens County planning process, that a very large cohort of our community is invested in right now, including a few members of the Planning Commission, and probably a few of the attendees on this. We are working through getting a survey out that should be coming in the next couple of weeks. It looks like we're going to be doing both an online survey, as well as paper surveys, and a random mail sample survey. So we're excited to get moving forward with that part, as we continue through this age-friendly assessment process through AARP. If anybody has any questions about that, I'm happy to answer them now about the process or being involved. But also feel free to reach out to me. The more people we have invested in this across Athens County, the better off our plan will be. Lastly, as you're all aware, at least, well, not all of you, but perhaps many of you are aware, we've been working through this housing tax increment financing strategy up at University Estates. We're continuing to have communications with City Council and the administration, as well as the developer, to try to resolve that issue. I would like to think that we'll be back with City Council Committee in the next few weeks. That's all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Paul.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commission Members. I just had a few things I wanted to bring up. We seem to be getting a lot of lot split permits and applications and requests for information. I just wanted to let you know that we're dealing with several lot split discussions with the county and the city within our three-mile radius. Those include a lot split on Pleasant Hill, commercial residential lot split on Angel Ridge Road, a commercial lot split in Cananeville Road, and residential on Cross Street. We also have a couple of lot splits that are in the works, that are in the city, ones on Warren Road, a potential on Warren Road, and then we've just got submission for a lot split on Fort Street. These are all handled internally. If we were to come up with a, with a lot split that required a major subdivision, it would come to the Planning Commission for review and approval. However, these permits are done internally by staff. And then I'll let you know, there's a, we're also doing some preliminary review for a couple of projects that will come to Planning Commission. Those are Title 41s or PUDs, and one is 985 East State Street. That's a little over a two-acre parcel that's going to go commercial some kind. And then there's a larger parcel on South Blackburn Road that's going to be a proposed church. And we're discussing with owners of both of those how they should proceed. That's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Are there any questions from the Commissioners? I do have a question, David, and I have a sneaking suspicion you might know what it's in reference to when you're talking about lot splits. As a lot of you know, the City Planner has been looking into discriminatory language in lots, both inside the city and outside, within the three-mile radius. And I take systemic racism extremely seriously, extremely seriously. It's non-tolerant, and nor should anybody be, but that's, that's me speaking. And David, do you, is a review of a land plat, the deed, is that required?
So what we're doing right now is we're requesting, we're looking at reviewing the codified ordinances to make changes whenever there's a zoning permit that comes in, to request the deed, so that we can review it. I personally, since the mayor, and I've been talking about this, have been, every time one of these comes in, I review the deed. You can get most of those online before approving any, any of these lot split permits. We don't have anything at this point in place via the codified ordinances, although I will be working on that in the next few weeks.
Thank you, David. And thank you for your work on that.
Mayor, can I give a brief, quick comment about that as well?
Yes, you can.
My intern, Lauren Connor, and I, she and I have been working on this. She's putting together a report, a brief report for you, that we should, we should have ready in the next week or so. We did some research at the County Recorder's Office, as well as talked with a few people, at least within the city limits. We did find, we did find one plat that was, that's within the city limits of Athens, that had some racist deed restrictions built into it. That was all we could find, at least at this time. We took random, random parcels and different subdivisions around the city, the areas of the city that were developed during different eras, et cetera. And we could not find anything, at least from, from our, from our research. And we spent considerable amount of time digging through the deed books at the County Recorder's Office. We had conversations with the County Recorder and their staff. They were all incredibly helpful to us. To their knowledge, there's not much either. In Athens County, the only one that we were really aware of was the one that we found that was in the city of Athens. So I think at a, at a minimum, I think there's, there's something good to report, that there's, we don't think there's a lot. However, there are some within the city limits of Athens that we, we need to have some discussions about how to remedy that situation, bottom line.
Thank you. Thank you.
More to follow. Yeah.
Thank you. And thank you again for all your work. In my opinion, that's one too many. So thank you. Oh, where did my agenda go? I believe now we have the opportunity for anyone who's here to speak.
So I'd like to make a comment. When will we, I guess, one question I have is, when will we be approving the apartment complexes that we received information on at the last meeting over at Lurig and 682? That's one. And then I just, you know, I had mentioned during that meeting, one of my, one of my concerns is the additional water runoff. And, you know, we talked a bit about retention ponds, and I know David indicated that they had reviewed that, and I'm glad they have, and I'm, I'm confident that we've done a good job. But, you know, one of the things is that I'm from the northeastern Ohio, and we would get a lot of rain, but we wouldn't get the, we wouldn't get the water flow that you get down here, running off hills and everything. And so I think that's one of the, you know, in terms of, from my perspective, and I know Nancy Bane talked a little bit as well. But from my perspective, one of the, one of the really important things is to make sure that those, those projects don't dump a lot of extra water, that, you know, and I'm not exactly sure where that creek behind there goes, if it runs into, you know, catches the water at Richland, or if it dumps into the river sooner. But, you know, all of that is real important to protect the properties around there. That area is pretty low and everything. And so I just wanted to reiterate, I'm confident we're doing it right, but I think that's a real important one. And, you know, I know Nancy mentioned the fencing around those detention ponds to make sure that they're safe for kids and other people that are in the area. And so, at any rate, that's just the one thing I wanted to mention. But will we be addressing those at the next meeting? That we will.
Well, well, we'll be addressing them when they come back to David Riggs as a case. Because they'll take what we, our comments, review it, make adjustments, take everything into consideration, and then they will come forward to David as, again, we'll see it again as a case for both of those developments.
Okay. Currently, if I could just, I can, I can add a little bit, if you, if that's okay, Mayor. Currently, the staff is working with the developer to make the changes that we talked about during the meeting. If you drive out there, you'll see that we've also posted the property as, as is required for a public hearing. That would be part of our case that we have, and it's right now scheduled for April 1. So that would be the next regular meeting of Planning Commission. And I know that the developer's working as hard as he can to get all that information complete and get it resubmitted to us. They're not there yet, but they're working really hard at it.
Okay. If there's no other comments or questions, and not hearing from any of the citizens who want to speak on items not covered on the agenda, any announcements or other business?
Mayor, I do have Nancy Bane's hand up.
Oh, Nancy. Planning Commissioner Nancy Bane. You're either muted, Nancy, or your mic's not on or something, but we're not hearing you if you are speaking. Nancy, if you want, and if you can, drop something in the chat, your question, if you have a question or a comment. Okay. Or Nancy, you can certainly call me. All right. Hearing no other announcements or other business, our next meeting will be, as was indicated, April 1. So other than that, do I have a motion to adjourn? A motion from Chief Pyle, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from John Katschowski. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.